We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, October the 7th, 2024. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Orlando Evans, Senior Pastor of Bright Star United Methodist Church. Good evening. And after that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Greetings, Mayor Robinson, council members and guests. Let's draw inspiration tonight from Psalm, Chapter 46, verse 10, which tells us to, "Be still and know I am God." As leaders, we're often pressured to be on the move as we make decisions, solve problems, navigate complex solutions, and combat various challenges that we face. As leaders who are on the move, it's important for us to master a skill that will best position us for success, no matter what we are facing. We must learn to be still and allow God to be our response. When we do, God is invited to counteract our situation with His wisdom, favor, peace, and ability to make a way out of no way. Let us pray. Gracious God, thank you for the insight that tells us to be still and make room for you to display what it means to be our God. You are our refuge and our strength, our offense and our defense, our shelter and our way of escape. Thank you for stabilizing, relieving, and repositioning us to a place of peace and a season of victory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Evans, we appreciate that. That was a good word right there. We appreciate the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Good evening. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting. This is a voting meeting. The city council's meeting tonight, official action will take place this evening on the items that were discussed last Thursday at our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates for you to discuss your business. There are just a few protocol issues I'd like to get over tonight to give us protocol on how the meeting will take place, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair. If you deviate from this warning, a second deviation will result in asking you to leave the chambers. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation with others while you're at the podium. We ask that you would just direct all of your comments, concerns, questions to the Chairperson. We're only required to accept public comments during the public hearings. And other than that, if you have any printed materials that you would like to give to myself and council members, we ask that you would please give those to our City Manager, Ms. Vicki Acker to my right. She will make copies and disseminate that information to us. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or applicant will make his or her presentation. We may possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make a determination before we vote this evening. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience if it is a public hearing. And if it is a public hearing, you have 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Before coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card. They're outside on the desk. There are some blue cards. You put your name and address for the record. Hand those to Ms. Acker, and then you can proceed with what you need to talk to us about. This is really not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here to hear their information, deliberate, think over that information, and make our decisions. And I believe that's a whole lot of talking, but that's how the meeting will run this evening. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. We do have physical copies of the agenda. They're outside on the desk if you'd like to pick one up. But if not, you can follow us electronically above my head as an electronic agenda. So now, we will move on with the agenda as it is presented. The announcements that we have this evening, it's a very special announcement. It's an actual presentation. It is from myself. It's a proclamation to the family of Ms. Joy Ponder Bates, honoring her life and memory. She was a member of our Planning Commission and a valued member in this community. And so, I will read her proclamation, and then we'll have a representative come from the family or someone that wants to speak on her behalf come to the microphone, and then you can talk to us a little bit about Ms. Ponder Bates. If there are some other members that served with her on our city board that you'd like to speak, you can come at that time as well. And then, we'll take some pictures, and we'll have the proclamation presented to her family. It reads in the following manner. "Officer of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Ms. Joy Ponder Bates. Whereas the city of Douglasville recognizes the profound contributions of Ms. Joy Ponder Bates, who dedicated her life to service, service of others, and bonding the spirit of community and justice. And whereas Joy Ponder Bates served with distinction as the president of the West Metro Branch of NAACP, championing civil rights and tirelessly working towards equality and justice for all. And whereas Joy Ponder Bates was a passionate advocate for children, making a significant impact through her work with the county's juveniles courts and the Court Appointed Special Advocates CASA program, ensuring that voices of the most vulnerable were heard and protected. And whereas, as co-founder of the Family Bridge Visitation and Community Services Center, Joy Bates provided critical support and resources to families in need, fostering stronger, healthier communities. And whereas, Joy Ponder Bates served as a valued member of the Douglasville City Council's Planning Commission, contributing her expertise and vision to the growth and development of our dear city. And whereas, Joy Ponder's legacy of service, compassion, and dedication has left an indelible mark on the city of Douglasville and lives on for countless ages to all individuals. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the city of Douglasville and the Douglasville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7th, 2024, as a celebration of the life and legacy of Joy Ponder Bates. I call upon all citizens to recognize and celebrate her extraordinary contributions to our community and to continue the work she left behind striving for a more just and equitable society, so proclaimed the seventh day of October, 2024." Let's give Ms. Ponder Bates a hand in her memory. Thank you all so much for allowing me to do that. I don't know who's coming forward to speak for her, but we can open the floor at this time. I know her sons are here, and my husband and I and our family were neighbors with Ms. Ponder Bates for over 23 years before we moved to an empty nester home. And I tell you, we didn't have an official, but it was unofficial official that she was the yard of the month, every month, because she was out there planting, and the yard was beautiful. And you'd come to the subdivision, her home was to the right, and it was always very just exquisite and beautiful. And she also walked the neighborhood, and so you would talk to her. She had the perfect name. Her name was Joy. She always had a smile. And I have her in my phone as Joy to the world, because I would say that to her when she called. I'd say, "Hey, Ms. Joy to the world, what's going on?" So she was a wonderful person, and we are so sorry for your loss. We ask whoever's going to come forward, if you want to come forward and speak, we'd love to hear from you. Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, yes, I'm Nichelle Ponder. I'm Joy Bates', niece.
Yes, ma'am.
Psalms 35.
Mm-hmm.
"We've been men and do it for a night, but joy comes in the morning."
Yes.
And my Auntie Joy, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming. Everyone for coming out and honoring my aunt, my twin. I stole that lady face. She was truly a joy to our entire family. We miss her so much. And, you know, we know, we know, because we are her family, the things that she did. But for the people of the community of Douglasville to honor her the way that you all have, it speaks volumes. I mean, we drove through traffic to get here because that was our heart, my daughter and I, my son-in-law. That was our heart. So we are so grateful and thankful for you all for honoring her. Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate that.
Yes.
And like I said, from our family, we really appreciate you all, everyone coming out, Carla, Gail, hey, y'all, and for coming and being here for our family. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there someone from the Planning Commission? Our Chair would like to come forward and speak. I know at her service, that was her, the scripture was, "Joy comes in the morning." And the pastor did an excellent job with the eulogy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I am Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley. I am the Chairman of the Planning Commission. And it was a pleasure to serve with Ms. Joy. She does, she did bring joy to our commission. One thing I like about all of our members, and especially Joy, is they care. They care about this community. And she would ask a lot of questions. And if I ever needed, if I ever asked if there was discussion, all I needed to do was look to the right side, because I know she would have a question. And that just shows the Planning Commission how much they care about this community and how much she did. And even if we didn't agree on something, we agreed to disagree, and that was it.
Yes.
It was just a pleasure to serve with her, and it was just, we were all stunned.
Yes.
We were all stunned as we heard of her passing. I went to her viewing, and I just, and I went when nobody was there. It was interesting. I just sat there. I just sat there with her like, you know, one last time.
I know.
So it was, it was a pleasure, and I know the commission, they all loved her, and we miss her.
Yes, sir.
And her seat is still empty, and if they never fill it, then we know that's her chair. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments from members that want to come forward? It's the CASA family.
NAACP.
Yes, ma'am. And CASA, yes, ma'am. Good evening, Judge-elect. How are you?
Excuse me. I'm Reverend Jethro Moore II. For my address is 8747 Puget Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135. Our President, beloved President, Madam Ponder Bates. I'm new to this area, and I'm feeling a chair currently that I don't think is possible for me to fill in the capacity from what I'm hearing. Her dedication, her inspiring personality, her unwavering commitment to this community has left an indelible mark that will always be remembered. In the words of Proverbs 31 and 25, she is clothed with strength and dignity. She can laugh at the days to come. Madam Bates embodies the spirit, facing challenges with grace, and inspiring this community and everyone that knew her to great heights. I understand her leadership was not just about guiding, but uplifting each individual she encountered, encouraging each individual to strive toward excellence. And I can only say, in the short time that I've met her, was that, I think, is One United Center. And she sat there so upright and straight, and I wondered, how could she keep her posture so straight? And she was like a queen sitting before me, and I had the brief moment of time to talk to her about the NAACP. And I've been serving for some time, and she's been serving for a shorter period of time. And so, I told her I would show her some of the ropes that she was coming to Las Vegas for her first national convention. And she said she wanted to do something, so I helped her write a resolution. And she said she wanted to do more resolutions like that. And I promised her that I would be there to help this branch to write resolutions. Neither did I know that before we could meet in Las Vegas and go forward to go sort of ropes, introduce her to some of the folks, she would leave. But she left an indelible mark, not just on me, for that short moment of time. In that twinkling of an eye, she touched me and this community. And so, on behalf of the National Association of the Advanced but of Colored People, we'd like to present this flag to the family. Now, this is something that the organization normally does not give out. This is a special tribute to one of our members who lost their life in the service to this organization. And your mother was an hour behind me on that road that night. So it's a special place that I will always remember. And we want to give this to you with honor, respect, and love that your mother poured into this community. And if we could do anything to pour it back into you, if there's ever a need that you, guys and niece, call on this branch, and we will answer. And I'm trying to work with this branch to establish something that we're going to do greater than this, but I can't say we're going to do it until we get it approved. But we want to do something that's going to honor your mother's life and legacy, not just for today, but for tomorrow. And we give this in the name of Jesus the Christ, our Lord and Savior, and we thank you for the service.
We'll have the family come forward, and we'll present both awards at the same time, if you don't mind coming for the pictures. Thank you to our Solicitor General, our Probate Judge, our, not municipal, but Superior Court Judge. We have, it's a full house, so it just shows you Ms. Ponder Bates and her service to the community. Will come forward, Council, come around so we can take a photo, please.
Let's go ahead with this one, and then we'll do the family separate. What are you doing?
Lady Padma Mayor.
Boy, I thought you wanted a picture with everybody. Well, we're trying to break it up into smaller groups so that, so if we can start with the family and the proclamation. All right.
that in our community, like Ms. Joy Ponder Bates, that serve on our boards and commission to give of their time. So that's a blessing. And thank you for everyone that's come out. Now, we'll move on with the remainder of the agenda. We'll move on to item number five, which is Approval of the Agenda. I will open the floor for a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October 7th, 2024.
Sound moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion, the second is there.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, any concerns from council members to approval? Thank you. It's been properly moved in second for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is October 7th, 2024. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The adoption of the regular meeting agenda is unanimously approved on October 7th, 2024. Just have enough for a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
I know. So we'll move on to Approval of the Minutes. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2024, Committee Meeting, Executive Session, Legislative Work Session, Executive Sessions.
Motion.
And the minutes, I apologize, Mayor Pro Tem, and the minutes of September 16th, 2024, which was just a regular meeting.
You were done.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have dueling seconds. Who was it? Ms. Acker?
Mr. Estes.
Mr. Estes. It's been properly moved by Mayor Pro Tem for approval, second by Councilman Estes to approve item 24-332. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 24-332 is unanimously approved. Now, I will open the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Sound moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller-N. It's been properly moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, which is item number 24-337. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns as it relates to this agenda item for the Consent Agenda? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 24-337 is unanimously approved. We are on item number eight. That is Economic Development Committee, and it's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. I will ask if you would mind doing the Finance Committee as well.
Be happy to, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Finance Committee at this time as well.
Thank you. We're going to play volley now. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
No business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
There's no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business for the Personnel and Organization Committee this evening.
Thank you, sir. We move on to item 13. There is business there. It is Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we do have a couple of items this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Our first is item 24-334, and that is to remove from the table item 24-269.
Okay, have a motion to, you want to put that in form of a motion to remove it from the table?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion that we remove from the table item 24-269.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to remove this item from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who do we have, Ms. Acker? Mr. Estes. Mr. Estes, it's been properly moved in second. Moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller-N, and second by Councilmember Estes to remove item 24-269 from the table. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns as we look to remove this item from the table? I don't see any. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It's been approved to move, to remove the item 24-269 from the table.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Our next item, sorry, my iPad's going a little slow here, 24-269.
Mm-hmm.
And that is tabled from August 19th, 2024. Says to consider request for change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached District to R3 Single Family Residential Detached District for 33.26 acres located in the intersection of Campbellton Street and I-20 and Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5, parcel IDs C-014, C-015, C-016, C-018, C-076, C-077, C-088, C-089, and Land Lot 23, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0024, application by Trayton Homes. Ms. Shayla Reed is going to give us an update on this.
Okay.
Greetings, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Shayla Reed, Community Development Director, 6695 Church Street. During our discussion on last week, there were a number of questions regarding the transportation measures, as well as there to be a buffer need. Since then, staff has worked with the applicant. We have allowed for there to be conversations to identify where those 20-foot underserved buffers would go. The applicant has been very helpful in identifying that on a site plan. You should see that attached inside of your packet. There are still some pending conversations that we're needing to have with Douglas County, and so that is one item that is still pending, as well as staff is needing to request this item to be tabled to allow for us to have more time, because the application needed to have signs posted, and somehow those weren't happening. So we need to ask for there to be a tabling to allow for signs to be posted for that 14th day before the public hearing.
Thank you so much for that update, Ms. Reed. I know that we've been in a lot of communication the last few days, just trying to work through some of this, and I will say, I am thankful and grateful to the applicant and Mr. Fowler in communicating with us and helping to get all of our questions answered, and especially working on that buffer for us as well. But I know that we do need to get some of these questions answered as far as the traffic mitigation goes. Would it be possible before the next time that we see the applicant for, I guess, maybe Mr. Fowler to have some conversations with you to make sure that we're getting all of those questions answered before we get back to the meetings?
So on behalf of the city, I think it would be best if maybe staff is communicating with the county. We did receive a letter from the county. I did reach out to the county asking them for clarity, and so I can say that I would like to take that initiative and be that contact person to have that conversation for clarity on that letter, and then provide a response back to you all prior to being able to meet again.
Thank you. I think that's exactly what we need. Before I make this motion, though, Council, do you guys have any more questions of Ms. Reed or of the applicant? Okay. Are you guys all understanding and okay with us tabling it?
Yeah, we're going to table until you're able to get.
Correct.
And you just have to tell us the dates of the meetings that you're going to table to.
What are those dates that we're looking at now?
Yes, ma'am. November 14th and 18th. Your legislation, Legislative Meeting is the 14th, and your actual regular meeting is the 18th.
Okay. Okay. So then, with that being said, sorry, hate to really be doing this again, but I make a motion that we table item 24-269 to the meetings of November 14th and 18th.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to table items number 24-269 to the meetings of November 14th and 18th, 2024, in order to get more information from the county and traffic studies and other, a lot of other concerns that we have with this application. So having said all that, I make, this been a motion made by the Chair. May I have a second, please, if you agree?
Second.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Hudson's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller N., and second by Councilmember Hudson to table item 24-269 to the meetings of November 14th and 18th, 2024. All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item, this item has been tabled to the meetings of November 14th and 18th, 2024, item 24-269.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one more item this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is item 24-311. Says to consider a request for change in zoning from R2, excuse me, these pop-ups, R2 Single Family Residential Detached District and PUD Planned Unit Development District to PUD Planned Unit Development District for 116.104 acres located on Brook Hollow Drive in Land Lot 77, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0014, and 0196, and Land Lot 78, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0151, and 0152. And Ms. Reed has, I know she's here, if we have any more questions for her. Were there any other updates?
No, ma'am. There were no updates for this item.
Okay. Council, did you guys have any questions regarding this item? No? I know the HOA was here, and it seems that this was pretty straightforward. Okay, well, with that being said, I make a motion that we approve item 24-311.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller N., and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 24-311. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns as it relates, and as has been said, the HOA was here on the work session, and they worked with the developer, and they didn't have any issues as far as relates to this concern, this item. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 24-311 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
By majority, Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. You are still on the floor. You're up next to bat for item 14, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
And Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Great. We'll move on then to public relations. I'll ask the Mayor Pro Tim to take the next few committees, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Public Relations Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind handling Public Safety Committee for me, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have one item under the Public Safety Committee at this time, and that is to hold a public hearing to consider a request for alcoholic beverage licenses for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. The proposed licensee is Om Shiv Raksha Inc., doing business as Hopin Chevron. Location is 8279 Chicago Avenue. The proposed agent outlet manager is Tanveen Patel. The required fees have been paid to the Finance Department.
Hello, sir. Good evening. My name is Tanveen Patel, 8279 Chicago Avenue, and we apply for the alcohol license, and we just requesting for the approval for license, please.
Do you have any new information to add to your application at this time?
I'm sorry.
Anything new to add to your application at this time?
No, sir, not right now.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and as we were given the rules and exigencies by Madam Mayor at the beginning, I will, prior to asking, any questions or comments from council members on this issue? Madam Mayor, yes?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Welcome, Ms. Patel. I know that we were saying that there is currently, this establishment does have an alcohol permit, but you're the new agent outlet manager.
Yes, ma'am.
You have purchased the business.
Yes.
And now this is your first opportunity to apply for the alcohol license.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, but there weren't any infractions as we asked the police department last Thursday, but I'm not certain if we asked about your procedure and how you check for ID of those that will be illegal age to purchase alcohol. If you don't mind giving us a brief overview of that.
Yes, ma'am. Like, I used to work in a guest house in seven years now, and whenever any customer come, we always ask for ID and make sure they are more than the 21 years old.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. And we just, we always try, like, they feel comfortable, and we always make sure we not got any trouble. I don't want to go jail at all.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yes, that's what we try to do.
Okay.
And we train our employees same like that, too.
Okay, so you train your employees as well?
Yes, ma'am. I personally trained them.
Oh, you personally trained them?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much, ma'am. That's all I had.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. We haven't voted yet.
All right. Well, being a public hearing, I will now open the floor to anyone in the public who would like to come down and speak either in favor or against this particular license application. Seeing as we have, as we see in the lexicon around here, no takers.
No takers.
I will now officially close the public hearing at this time. I would like to place at this time item 24-308 in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve by Mayor Pro Tim, Acting Public Safety Committee Chairperson, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 24-308. Without having any other concerns, comments, or questions from council, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 24-308 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Public Safety Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. I appreciate you taking that committee. If you would be gracious enough to take Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee as coaches, probably downtown waiting already at the gala.
I will be happy to. Well, there's no business under the Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you so much. Ms., Councilmember Hudson, do you mind taking Transportation Committee for me, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Transportation Committee this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. We'll move on to item 20, which is other business. Do we have any other business to come before council this evening from council members? You want to talk about the chili cook-off, or are we going to do that offline?
I mean, we can, because we are participating this year.
Yes, sir.
As a group. So I hope everybody up here will be there, and everybody else can come out and try our chili, because it's very good.
Is it the champions? What's the chili?
We are the defending champions since the last time we participated, which was two years ago.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. And I've adjusted my schedule, so I will definitely be at the chili cook-off, and thank you so much for yielding and being gracious enough. We appreciate the teamwork. Councilmember Hudson, I don't know. You may bring something else and sprinkle it in there. From Hudson's barbecue, it's really going to put us over the top, so. What? Oh, this is exciting. This is exciting. So thank you so much. Any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any other comments. So we'll move on then to update some of our city staff, our legal team. Ms. Lynn, you have anything?
No updates tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Our police department, our deputy chief, Mr. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. Our city managers department, our deputy city manager, Ms. Jackson.
No updates tonight, Madam Mayor.
What?
Nothing tonight.
Comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to myself and council members about any business that has remained to the city of Douglasville. When you come forward at the microphone, please give us your name and address. Good evening.
I'm sorry I had to change my glasses. I could read.
Understand. I'm right there with you.
I have two of them. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for your service to the community. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My name is Jeter Nibalogon Blunt, and I live at 8655 Houd Place, apartment C2, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134, and that's Alpha Fowler property for the disabled and elderly. I qualify there because I'm disabled. I was born with sickle cell disease, and I have pulmonary hypertension, lung disease, and a heart disease that I do see the doctors for very often. I do get blood treatment every month. In order to survive, without that, I would not be alive. Right now, I have a problem with the property that I would like to discuss with you, if you don't mind.
That development is under the housing authority.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not really under our auspice. We can hear, and then we can report to the housing authority and have your concern heard through them.
Well, I have done that, but I'm not finding anybody to speak to. The ones I've spoken to, they kept telling me to speak to somebody else, and when you called the number, nobody's picking up. I'm never picking up the number. And at the same time, the ones that I've emailed said that I should be expecting phone calls from Houd, and then I never got a call. And the property director, her name is Ms. Jennifer Farmer, I've already requested her to please call Houd so that we can discuss the situation. She refused. She declined. And one of the rights that I have as a resident is to be able to get my file, to go through it and review, and she declined that as well. So I've done everything on my side, on my part as a resident, to be able to get that information that I need, but they declined giving it to me. So right now, I'm at a loss for what to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the problem is really about mold and mildew. It started up about a year ago. I contacted the maintenance department. They came over. They told me it wasn't mold and mildew. That was just dust, and that all I needed to do was use warm water, and I did do what they said, because I believed them as professionals. I kept doing that, and then later on, I called them back again, because there was water coming from the floor in the bathroom. They came, wiped it away, and they gave me dehumidifier just for the weekend. And I was telling them I was sure there was a problem with moisture in my apartment, but they declined, and they said no. They tested it. They did come to test. But at this point, I'm thinking the problem is either they do not know what to do in order to get the problem fixed, or that they really know, and they do not just tell me the truth. So they sent me a letter to say that they're not responsible for it, although they did give me three letters. First letter, they offered me a place to stay, because they knew they were responsible. Then they also sent me a letter to say they'll put me in a hotel for as long as I needed it. And then the third letter was saying they'll pay for everything that was damaged, my personal belongings. However, and none of those letters was preconditioned with an inspection, or something has to happen if I can get those things. However, they went to inspect and came back and said, sorry, Georgia says they cannot be responsible for the mold and mildew, and therefore they canceled my stay in the hotel after 10 days, I think, and told me they cannot replace anything. They would not clean the apartment. They would not do anything. Meanwhile, after they said that, I contacted two independent contractors. One of them was a professional with the mold and mildew. They inspected. They said there was moisture in the bathroom floor, which they cleaned, which they gave me dehumidifier for, and they gave a report to the property director, Ms. Farmer, and she declined to look at the report. I called another contractor, which was versatile with HVAC, and he said there was a problem with the HVAC. And I've already made two complaints about the HVAC when I was there, and they told me there was nothing wrong. But if you look at the work order, they didn't make, they didn't make the owners of the HVAC come back and refix it, because there was problem with the HVAC. So the two contractors did say the humidity in my apartment is over 70%, and the normal is 50%. I've sent the lab, mold to the lab, and the lab came back and said there was mold and mildew, but they've claimed for almost one year, it was just dust. So they did either tell me the truth or they didn't know that it was really mold and mildew. So at this point, I'm not angry with them. I just want to find a solution to it, because I'm not able to live in there because of my health situation. I'm living with friends right now, and I don't want to make them uncomfortable as well. I don't want to make their home my permanent place, because I'm paying rent at the apartment, and I've not been there for a while now. But if you go back in there, there's still the mold and mildew. They've claimed they've cleaned it. I went back and cleaned it, but it's back up again.
Yes, ma'am.
The humidity is still very high, so there's still microbial in the air, and they're still claiming it's not so. So I really can't breathe that air in, and I'm still paying my rent.
Yes, ma'am. We're sorry for your inconvenience and your problems that you're having, but it really is not under our auspice to do anything about it. We can certainly recommend, we have our legal that can give you maybe the number to the housing authority, or seems like civil action. I can't give you a recommendation of what you should do. I just know we can't do anything about it, as a city of Douglasville, because the housing authority is a federal program, and so it's not under this, even though we live in the city, and the developments in the city is not under our purview.
Well, the reason why I did come over here was because there's an issue at the same property with mailboxes, and we were told by the property management, Afraid of Same, that the city council called them and told them to fix the problem, and they did fix it, even though it's a federal property. So that's why I was thinking this is the best place to come as well to get results.
I understand.
Because they said the city called them. The city council called them.
Yes, ma'am. And the mailboxes, of course, is United States Postal Service, so.
Oh, no, not postal service. I'm talking about getting a drop box in our clubhouse so we could pay our rent into the drop box.
Yes, ma'am.
So instead of going over to the property management to pay our, pay our rent, they said we could use the clubhouse right now, and it was the city council members that made the decision over the federal property. So that's why I thought this is the best place to come back and make the same complaint, because I know they could take action on my behalf. So I don't know what to do. I've contacted everybody I could, and nobody's helping me out right now.
Yes, ma'am. So Ms. Lynn, if you don't mind giving her the housing authority information.
You left the contact card?
Yes, ma'am.
With Ms. Acker? Do some resources to help you.
Well, I do hope those ones will be able to help me out, because I'm really tired of running around. I don't know what else to do.
Yes, ma'am. We empathize with you. I'm sorry you're having those problems.
Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. God bless you. Any other comments from citizens and delegates?
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
And City Council. My name is Oryd Curry, 5315 Brook Hollow Drive. First of all, thank you for, we came together with our HOA, talking to y'all about the development. So I already passed, so I don't have to go through that. But the second thing I want to talk about is I want to thank all of y'all, the public safety, for what y'all doing in the community. As being a HOA president and being very active in the community and working with both the city and the county, trying to make sure, because I'm prior law enforcement myself and prior military. So just to come back and have a place that is safe, and that y'all doing a good job and thinking about some of the things that's going on, because most of the people in my community are worried about more things about traffic that's happening in the community, because we are growing very fast, more than sometime the people in the community think we should be growing. But I think, I know it's a very hard decision-making time to make these decisions, and we just want to say, because I'm also a part of the rising men of Douglasville with Chief Sparks, and just to have that in the Youth Against Violence programs that y'all having here in the Police Citizens Academy, giving the citizens the ability to sit down and see what's going on in the public safety, and seeing how the city and the county is being run. So I just want to give you all accolades. I want to give you all thanks for what y'all doing. I know it's a hard process of doing this, because I sit on the planning and zoning board for the county, so I know how y'all feel. So it's one of those things where you have to go back and look and say, and you're out there with the people, meeting with the people. That's very important, because sometime when you sit in these positions, some people forget how they got in these positions, and y'all are not doing that. Y'all are being grassroots and keeping it where it needs to be, and I want to thank you and give you all, y'all kudos today, and thank you very much. I end my speech.
Thank you so much, Mr. Curry. We appreciate the atta boys. Thank you. Two came said thank you when it got healed from the leopards. Any other, any other comments from citizens and delegates? Thank you. If we don't have any other business, then coming for the council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.